To order, and at this time I'll ask Commissioner Larry Johnson to offer the implication.
Our Father in Heaven, as we tend to be in humble prayer this evening, we thank Thee, Father in Heaven, for this opportunity to gather together. We thank Thee for Surry County, State of North Carolina, and most especially, the United States of America. We're thankful for our freedom and our liberty. We're thankful for those who provide this for us. We're thankful for the democracy that we have. We pray, Father in Heaven, as we have this meeting tonight, that we can take care of the county's business in an orderly fashion. We pray for these elected officials as they strive to serve the citizens of this county. Help us that we can use wisdom and common sense in our decision making. Again, we thank Thee for our safety in coming here, and these things we ask and pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Looking for approval, approval of this evening's agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Marion. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Looking for approval of the June 6, 2020, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Consent agenda, I'll turn that over to our county manager, Chris Knopf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item are the Tax Department's end-of-month summaries, charges, and reports, acceptance of property conveyance, waste haulers, non-exclusive franchise renewals, Trooper Samuel Ballard Bridge naming resolution, a position grade change, a position name change, detention center change orders, and finally, ARP Uniform Guidance Policies. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read for, this is about acquisition of the 1830 courthouse in Rockford, which is a historical landmark for our county. The Board of Commissioners pleased to announce, in conjunction with Surry 250 and Surry County's Invest in Surry Initiative, the acquisition of the 1830 Surry County courthouse in historic Rockford. Building served as a county courthouse from 1830 until 1853. This acquisition process has been ongoing since last fall and was slowed due to title issues on the part of the seller. Now that this process has concluded, we're excited to move forward. The board wants to thank the county's Parks and Recreation Department, Development Services, and Public Works Department for their property improvement efforts the past few weeks. County staff is already engaged and is working closely with restoration specialists from North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. State Historic Preservation Office developed a plan and use for the building and property going forward. It is the county's primary intent to return use of this property to citizens of Surry County in some capacity as we move forward in developing a plan for the property. Commissioner Harris is gonna read a resolution honoring Trooper Bullard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution for Trooper Samuel Bullard. As you all well know, Trooper Bullard was killed in the line of duty in Surry County and on May the 21st, 2018. And it's my pleasure to read this into the record. Surry County, North Carolina Board of Commissioners Board Resolution requesting the North Carolina Department of Transportation to name the North Carolina 268. Excuse me. The North Carolina 268 bypass CC Camp road bridge over the Big Elkin Creek, the Trooper Samuel Newton Bullard Bridge in his memory. Whereas Samuel Newton Bullard was a native and lifelong resident of Wilkes County and the son of Samuel, and the son of Samuel Bullard and Suzanne Phelps. And whereas Samuel Newton Bullard was a graduate of East Wilkes High School, and whereas Samuel Newton Bullard was an avid hunter and outdoorsman and also participated in his passion for Mills Own Wheels. Whereas Samuel Newton Bullard began his law enforcement career on the 21st of June, 2015 with the North Carolina State Highway Patrol and was assigned to Surry County as a trooper, serving proudly for just over three years. And whereas Super Trooper Samuel Newton Bullard serves Surry County professionally in all of his assigned duties, making Surry County roads safer to travel. And whereas Trooper Samuel Bullard was killed in the line of duty due to a collision in a vehicle pursuit on the 21st of May, 2018. Whereas Trooper Samuel Newton Bullard was posthumously awarded the Officer of the Year Award at the 2019 Blue Line Brotherhood banquet in Kannapolis. And whereas the Surry County Board of Commissioners wishes and desires to honor Trooper Samuel Newton Bullard for sacrificing his life in the service to Surry County and his state, now therefore be it resolved that the Surry County Board of Commissioners just hereby in memory honor Trooper Samuel Newton Bullard, deceased for his bravery and service as a trooper in the North Carolina State Highway Patrol. Be it further resolved that the Surry County Board of Commissioners just hereby respectfully request, North Carolina Department of Transportation to dedicate the bridge, the North Carolina 268 bypass CC Camp Road over Big Elkin Creek in Surry County in honor of Trooper Samuel Newton Bullard, who was killed in the line of duty, and erecting appropriate signage designating this honor this 20th day of June, 2022. And some may wonder my emotion here. Without doubt, this was the hardest night of evening in my term in 12 years here on this board. And it happened as Commissioner Tucker and I came out of Commissioners' meeting and we got the call from Johnny Shelton and we didn't know which trooper it was. And my son-in-law, who has been the impetus behind this, and is the person requesting this, Trooper Brandon Cox. And I would like to add that my grandson was born about a year ago and was named in honor of Trooper Bullard. And Mr. Chairman, there's two members of the Highway Patrol here tonight. I don't know if they want to come up and say something at this time. If you would allow personal appointment privilege, I don't know. I'd like to request if they would, if they are willing or have any interest in doing that. You guys good?
Forward.
Brandon Cox, Florida Patrol Pipes, both stationed in Surry County. Rebooted through five. We just wanted to thank you all for attending tonight. It's been a little over four years since Trooper Bullard was killed. And I was advised in the beginning that this sign designation would be a long journey. I had no idea it would be this long. On behalf of the Troopers, Trooper Bullard's family, we're very grateful to finally get this bubble rolling and hopefully have some time to honor him very soon.
Thank you all for your help.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
This gentleman's emphasis behind every bit of it. One for him. He put this all together.
Thank you. What a great honor. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for my emotion. It's it'll, it'll never be easier for me.
At this time, we'll have our open forum. We'll give citizens three minutes to speak.
We need to approve.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Consent agenda.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
A motion by Commissioner Harris. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And ayes have it. This time we'll have our open forum. We'll give citizens three minutes to speak. Please state your name and phone number, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Floor's open.
Rachel Collins, 336-971-4869. I want to come again before you guys and this board to passionately request that you will consider reversing or postponing your decision to eliminate the Park Bus Route 6. I know you guys are all busy. I emailed this morning and since I didn't get a response, I thought I would come back. I will not reiterate my statement from the April meeting, but I firmly believe the park route is an asset to our local communities in Pilot Mountain, Mount Airy, and King. By eliminating the route in Surry County, you are also upsetting services in King, North Carolina as well. The late U.S. Representative Howard Cobal and a predominantly Republican board worked hard to bring this park dream a reality. The Transportation Authority was authorized by legislation and the purpose of the authority quoted from the North Carolina General Statute is to enhance the quality of life in its territorial jurisdiction by promoting the development of sound transportation systems which provide transportation choices, enhance mobility, accessibility, and safety, encourage economic development and sound growth patterns, and protect the man-made and natural environments of this region. By voting to withdraw from part, I believe you have signified that Surry County is not invested in these values and not interested in the citizens that the park bus serves. You have signified that Surry County doesn't want to be a collaborative partner in future projects that lead to growth and the betterment of our communities. I don't honestly think you all individually believe this, but by getting rid of this program in such a hurry, it gives off this impression. I believe that the park system is an economic development tool for rural counties. According to the Office of the North Carolina State Demographer, the population of Surry County in 2000 was 71,208. In 2019, it was 71,783. And 2020, 71,359. So essentially, for the last 20 years, we have stayed about the same within 150 people. I would argue that we need to provide reasons for people to stay in the county and offer any items that they could be, that could be used as a basis for new businesses to be attracted to our area. Our willingness to provide public transportation is just a small piece of that puzzle. When riders use the park buses and get off in our lots, they go to the grocery store, ABC stores, or other local small businesses and their dollars stay in our communities. I would love for that to continue. I understand that Mr. Brent McKinney, founding director of part and Surry County resident, has reached out to you all and offered to present the information he has regarding the benefits of part. I would highly encourage you all to consider taking him up on this offer. His expertise in this area is unmatched. He was previously City of Winston-Salem Director of Transportation and City Traffic Engineer, Executive Director of Part from 2001 to 2012, and is currently an instructor at A&amp;T State University. You have nine days to make a difference. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Libby Radford. My home phone number is 336-320-2398. Dear Chairman Bill Goins, Commissioners Larry Johnson, Ed Harris, Mark Marigan, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. And first, I'd like to thank you for your concerns for the issues of all the feral cats that you've listened to through the last months here in Surry County. Tiny Tigers does an excellent job. However, I learned today, currently they are out, completely out of funds. If we in Surry County do not intervene, the number of feral cats will only continue to increase and the cost to the county for animal control services will increase. According to the Department of Agriculture, it is a state law that cats or dogs must stay in a shelter for five days. They are fed. This is an average cost of $240 a day for one week. That is $1,120 cost in the county to keep that animal in the animal shelter. This cost probably includes staffing, equipment, other operation, and animal control. And at the end, the cats and dogs lose their life. Over the last few years, per the stats that I received from the office, 8,109 cats were euthanized. Tiny Tigers has a veterinarian service that works with them to neuter and spray these cats for $29 for a male and $25 for a female, plus $8 for rabies. They offer a solution that would be great to save Surry County funds in addition to making Surry County a safer place to live and enjoy. As a registered nurse, I am asking that you please consider adding Tiny Tigers to your budget this year so that we can keep Surry County safe from injuries and diseases. And this would stop the practice of euthanizing cats. Thank you.
I'm short. Good evening. My name is Teresa Leva. I live in Mount Airy and my phone number is Airy code 703-336-9740. I am a volunteer for Surry Animal Rescue and I'm here to advocate for the spay and neuter program to help the overpopulation of feral cats in Surry County. One female cat can reproduce up to four times a year for an average of about 15 years. And in every litter, they have on average between four and six cats. If you say four cats four times a year for 15 years, that is 240 cats for one female that themselves will also be reproducing. Feral colonies are not localized to Mount Airy, Dobson, Pilot, Elkin, or the rural areas. They are in every part of our county. All three rescues, Surry Animal Rescue, Tiny Tigers Rescue, maybe for Paws, all work alongside each other and support each other when it comes to helping the overpopulation of animals in our community as well as working with animal control. We are all overwhelmed. Last week, in six days, myself and Surry Animal Rescue had to turn down 40 cats that were being surrendered to our rescue, most of which were feral colonies that people were just trying to be good and find homes for. I already have a litter of kittens at my house as well as a foster dog, my own four dogs and my own three cats. All but one are all rescues as well. We're all doing the best we can and we're all overwhelmed. Maybe for Paws had to pause on taking in dogs recently. Tiny Tigers has had to stop taking cats. We're trying our best to help, but we're full too. I took in eight dogs last week for Surry Animal Rescue. More feral cats bring more predators, bring more diseases to our community, and it is our responsibility to ethically and humanely stop the overpopulation of the feral cat colonies in Surry County. I'm someone who likes to bring options of solutions when I present a problem, and I have thought of two solutions. In short term, we need a spay and neuter clinic that will help with the overpopulation of the feral colonies now. And I think it would be most beneficial to create a committee or a board or whatever you guys want to do with people from the rescues and animal control to oversee this. I know that myself and many other volunteers would be more than willing to help collect the animals and then send them back out once they've had their shots and they're fixed. A longer-term solution would be to look into the idea of getting a humane society, which I understand is not a government-run program, however, has access to more state and federal funds than any of our nonprofits do. I think it would be beneficial to our community in the short term and the long term to look at these things. And I'd be happy to assist in any way that you guys need to help collect more information going forward. And I thank you.
Alan Backshaw. My number is 336-909-0192. I come very simply. I'm definitely not gonna need three minutes. Just to give you the numbers for May, I just wanted to make sure that they were verified before I submitted them for y'all. During May, from May 1st to May 31st, cat intake was 139. Eighty-two of those cats died. One of them was returned to owner. Nineteen were adopted out and 35 were rescued. Ninety-five dogs came into the shelter. Twenty-one died. Twenty-two were returned to owner. Thirteen were adopted and 32 were rescued. As Teresa just mentioned, there's so many rescues that have actually closed down for intakes. Our fosters are full. Veterinarians, again, there's the high rate of suicide. I encourage you to kind of investigate that. Basically, veterinarians across the United States of America are committing suicide. They're overworked, underpaid. Rescues, all of these are run by volunteers, come out of our pockets. Most of the people who come up here in front of you have rescued probably hundreds of animals during 2021 alone. So the numbers are going up. I agree with Teresa. It would be great to have a Surry spay and neuter clinic, something that would be able to help, especially with the feral cat population. It's unbelievable the amount of feral cat colonies within Surry County right now. And it would be great to be able to address that. So, thank y'all.
Boz, and I'm sure you've memorized my phone number by now, but it's just in case, 804-432-1233. Commissioner Johnson, I want to thank you for bringing our democracy to God today. I too am a big fan of our democratic republic where we vote for representatives, people to speak for us, represent us, and fight for us, which is why I keep coming up here, because I'm asking you guys to fight for us. I am, I am very excited about what's happening in our country. Voter fraud and voter issues are being exposed in a big way and it keeps growing exponentially every day. It's very exciting to see that we're finally getting to the bottom of this. And we will also eventually get to the bottom of it here in Surry County. And it'll all be exposed. I know that. I know that in my heart. So it's not too late for you to jump on the winning team. It's not too late for you to be on our team. And I say that in a way that we're asking you to be enthusiastic supporters of some of the things that we're asking you. And one of the things that I'm gonna ask you tonight is that you take an official role in whatever capacity you can to ask the Board of Elections not to destroy any of the evidence from the 2020 election in September, because September's the 22-month point where they could legally shred all of the ballots from the 2020 election. And that would be unfortunate and is unnecessary. And they may come up with an excuse like they can't store it or something, and that's where you come in, is, is, is offering a means to store it and asking them why, why would they need to destroy that, that information, that evidence right now? So that's my request for tonight. And, and while I'm up here, I'll, I'll refresh some memories for the next one minute and nine seconds on why, why I keep coming up here. For example, a 26-year-old female and a 62-year-old female voted from an Elkin address, and the current resident says they didn't live there at her address at the time of the election, and they both, both voted one in person and one absentee by mail. A 38-year-old male, 53-year-old female voted from a state road, North Carolina address, and the current resident says that neither of them lived there at the time of the election. They both voted early in Surry County. A 20-year-old male and a 32-year-old male, 52-year-old male and a 56-year-old female also voted from a Mount Airy address, one in person, and the other three early voting. And there hasn't been a house on that lot in three years, according to the neighborhood. It lived there nine years. They voted from a house that didn't exist. A 50-year-old female from Pinnacle voted from Pinnacle in person on Election Day, and that person was living in Windsor, New Hampshire at the time of the election. A 49-year-old male from Pinnacle voted early and was residing in Lynchburg at the time. And lastly, a 65-year-old female and a 69-year-old male from a Pilot Mountain, North Carolina address voted absentee by mail, and both moved to Colorado June of 2020. This, this whole bucket here, I could read them all to you. And this is like 1% of Surry County's issues in my hand. There's so much of it. So please, please do your part and don't let them destroy that evidence because, oh, and by the way, if you jump on our team, then when it all gets exposed, you're gonna look really good. Thank you.
Well, I have never been here in this capacity. I'm Patty Miller Falk. My telephone number is 336-970-3146. I'm glad I remembered that because my heart's beating fast. Bill, you and I have worked together. I've worked for you and under you and with you. Mr. Johnson, I want to thank you for the care that you gave my dad, Jim Miller, who was a Board of Commissioner member for over 20-some years here in Surry County. I'm ashamed to say that I did not attend most of his meetings, but I know the work, that the reading and the studying that he did, and the heartfelt decisions that he made for, on behalf of Surry County and the people in Surry County. And that's what's important here tonight. I am absolutely sure that Donald John Trump won the 2020 election. And we have not spoken up and stood up to say that something is wrong. Something is wrong. So tonight, I'm here, if I may, may I approach, Bill?
You might share these. I would like them back of their evidence.
I got these in the mail for the 2020 election. I live at Salome Road. I've never gotten those in the mail before. They were not requested. I have three children. One lives in New York City. One lives in Birmingham, Alabama. One lives in Puerto Rico. The first set of those that I got, my husband is Dale Falk. Jacob Aaron Falk is on that list. And I gave Andrew Falk his, and he threw them in trash can. So I don't have those with me. The first set I got, I threw away. I thought, that's the strangest thing that I've ever seen. Then I got those second ones, and I thought, well, I'm gonna hold on to these. Then I got a third one. I called our Board of Elections here in Surry County, and I said, why am I getting these? They said, we're not sending them out. I said, well, who is sending? I said, well, who is sending them out? Those are three Democrats that live at my, or used to live at my address. Dale is a registered Democrat. I can't convince him otherwise. But he doesn't vote Democrat, but anyway, um, it's the truth. That caused me to want to be part of the canvassing team. I canvassed with friends here, visited over sixty homes. I can testify to what John was saying. It was appalling. Please, please help us. Be as motivated, Mr. Harris, for the men and women that have died for America, as you were for that man tonight. Help us.
Dale Norman, three, three, six, seven, eight, nine, two, eight, eight, seven. Uh, I just want to reiterate what John said about the twenty twenty election data being secured. Uh, I just want to remind too, I, I think that Chairman Goins and I'm sure the board was behind him and with him because y'all are unified, remember? So that you would secure that data. And I just want to ask you to find a safe place so that we can be assured that it is being uh, safely taken care of. John also mentioned some affidavits and places that was visited. And there was one he didn't mention, uh, that I, Dwight Seal and I went to this one over in Marsh, and it was, uh, I think an eighty-three-year-old man. He was not home, which was a good thing. That meant he was able to be out and about and enjoying life. But on the uh, walk book that I had, it said he uh, did a mail-in vote. So uh, I didn't feel quite right about it, so I actually talked to his son, and his son said, well, he always votes on Election Day. So I asked the poll worker over at uh, Marsh if, if uh, this gentleman uh, normally voted in person. And they said, oh, yeah, yeah, we saw it. We saw him. He always comes. We look forward to seeing him. So that meant that that man did not have possibly a vote that counted. So you know, that age group has done an awfully lot to uh, secure our freedoms in a lot of different ways. And we ought to at least make sure that their vote counts. And if I were one of his children, not only would I fight for America, but I'd fight for my dad's vote. So just uh, wanna say uh, we need your help. We hope you'll, we hope you'll come on board with us. Thank you.
Anyone else for open forum? I'll close the open forum, and we'll move to Christie Pressett, Director of Social Services, for her report.
Good evening. I have several items for your consideration tonight. The first item is the agency's Program Integrity Plan. This is our, um, you probably are more familiar with it as our fraud program. This is the program that investigates public assistance fraud in the county. And recently, some changes were made to what types of fraud cases would be eligible for referral for criminal prosecution. So this plan is modeled after the state's plan and is, we have to submit our approved plan to the state and I'd like you to consider that this evening. I realized tonight when I got here that the signature line was accidentally cut off of my copy, so I'll have to get a, a, an official copy back to you Chairman Goins. But basically, the plan says that for Medicaid cases, work first cases, or food and nutrition cases where the fraud is greater than ten thousand dollars, those cases will be considered for process referral to the district attorney for prosecution. Uh, it's ten thousand dollars per program, or if the fraud, if those three programs collectively are greater than ten thousand dollars, we will refer those for prosecution. We have a, a, a pretty solid fraud program that we've developed over the past several years. We have, um, our collections rate is pretty good. So there's not a lot of need for criminal when we refer all to the district attorney's office, but the state is requiring this because of the recent changes. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I have Ann Slate and Terry Waddle with me. They are the experts in this particular program. If you have detailed questions, I'll have to call one or both of them up.
Is this what we used to call income verification? Or no?
Um, I don't.
What was the name of this program integrity? Like, will we verify income and eligibility and that sort of thing to, for the fraud? There was a name for it, it seems like.
Um, well, I mean, our, all of our programs for food and nutrition services, Medicaid, they all require income verification. Um, that's a, a term that we use frequently to describe what our caseworkers do. We typically in-house call it fraud. Uh, the state refers to it as program integrity. I'm not sure, Jim, I mean, Commissioner Harris, if I answered your question or not.
I'm done. Ms. Chairman, you looking for a motion? I'll move that we adopt the um, MOU with um, the state on the program integrity plan.
I have a motion by Commissioner Harris. Do I have a second? Second, second by Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
Okay. The second item for your consideration is the annual um, memorandum of understanding between DSS and the Department of Health and Human Services. We've been operating under the same MOU with DHHS for the past couple of years because of COVID. Basically, they extended um, the nineteen twenty, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty MOU through June of this year. So the MOU that you have in front of you is for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, plus twenty-three and twenty-four. It's a two-year MOU. The standards are basically the same. They, they have tweaked a couple of the performance measures. Um, the state still has some difficulty in measuring a few of the items that were originally intended to be measured, but basically, for the most part, this plan is the exact same as it was, I guess, three years ago now. So that is also for your consideration and approval.
Any, any questions? Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve the uh, our social service to enter into proposed memorandum of understanding with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and ayes have it.
Chairman Goins, I'll get both of those to you in the next day or so for your signature. I have just a few informational items for you. Uh, attachment C in your packet is our recent fiscal monitoring. This was a, a clean report. Uh, DHHS sends staff um, annually to monitor our financial records. This is the second clean report in a row that we've had. Maybe jinxing us when I say that, but um, it's, these are tough audits, and they look at all of our expenditures and all of our revenue and just make sure that eyes are dotted and t's are crossed. So it was a clean audit, and I'm very proud of our, our fiscal staff for that. Attachment B in your packet is the Social Services Block Grant Audit. Um, spring is the season of audits for DHHS. Uh, the Social Services Block Grant Funds are primarily used in our Adult Services Department to fund um, adult protective services, um, individual and family adjustment services. I'm drawing a blank on all the, the different programs that SSBG funds, but this also was a clean report, no corrective action required. All of these reports that I share with you, they, on paper, they come down to two or three pages, but in reality, it's a tremendous amount of work on, on behalf of our staff. So congratulations to the adult unit for making that particular audit happen. The third item is Attachment E. This is the um, Rita audit that I updated you on last year. Uh, it's a ten-month audit. It was completed in January of this year, and we just got the results back on June third. The basically three hundred, um, excuse me, a hundred active Medicaid cases were tested, a hundred negative cases were tested. Those are cases where we denied an individual for Medicaid. And then um, combined two hundred cases for internal control issues. There was only one area where we did not meet the state standard, and that was in negative eligibility, meaning that there were, um, actually, there were four cases out of the one hundred that we denied Medicaid eligibility, or we didn't evaluate for all Medicaid programs. And that caused us to fall below the ninety-six point eight percent threshold, which means we will be in program improvement in that particular area. And we actually have our first call tomorrow to develop our corrective action plan. Also, what the statute um, that created this audit was created, it was created several years ago, but this, the statute requires a payback for any Medicaid expenses that were paid out on behalf of ineligible individuals, and you'll see in your packet that our payback was seven hundred and twenty dollars. So um, I, I don't like, we don't like to pay any money back. The seven hundred and twenty dollars is minor compared to what it could have been. With Medicaid, you never know if um, what the bill might be, just like when any of us go to a doctor, you don't know what the expense is going to be, what insurance is going to cover, that kind of thing. So seven hundred and twenty dollars, we um, I mean, we were, we were okay with that amount. I say we were okay. We were not okay with that amount, but it could have been much worse. If you'll remember, I, I came to you a few years ago and asked that you, when, when Rita was first passed by the legislature, and I asked you to consider setting up a special fund and to set aside for these particular audits because counties everywhere were panicked about what the potential for paybacks would be. And what counties across the state, I think, are finding is that typically a payback is less than a thousand dollars. So and the last item that I have for you is the title four E, Foster Care Guardianship Assistance and Medicaid Administrative Claiming Monitoring Report. We have one error case um, on this particular report. We have, we appealed the case, we appealed the case decision, and originally, we were overturned on that decision. And we worked with our attorney, the county, the agency attorney, uh, and Ms. Campbell was able to get an amended court order to rectify the error. This case dated back when, when the monitors come in and they find an error, they go back and, and foster care, they go all the way back to the beginning of the case. This particular case went back to May of eighteen. So we worked with Ms. Campbell. Ms. Campbell was able to get an amended court order to rectify the situation, and we are currently waiting on information about what payback uh, may occur as a result of that. I had hoped to have that for you by this afternoon, but tonight, and I did not get it from the state, so that will be a, a future update. And that is all that I have.
Thank, thank you for all you do and all, and all you have done.
Thank you.
You're retiring, and we appreciate your service in Surrey County.
Thank you very much.
Wish you well. You'll, you'll float around a little lighter uh, when you retire. So, so we wish you well in your retirement, and uh, we appreciate all of your staff and what they do and everything.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Christie.
Thank you, Christie.
Marty Needham, Development Services Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, tonight, this is for a rezoning case, number ZCR one, two, two, one. The applicant says David Creed with Creed Transmissions. This to, poses a reclassified five acres for community business conditional use to allow for automotive sales and motor vehicle repair on the property. Current zoning on the property is rural agricultural. Proposed zoning is community business conditional. Property is located at ten fifty-two Pratt Road in Airat. Um, the rezoning is consistent with the county's land use plan, staff communication, communicating with the person via phone and and in person, and this conditional rezoning was deemed sufficient for what he's wanting to do. The planning board heard the case last Monday and um, no opposition invited to pass the rezoning. And there was no opposition. Any questions? And I'm not sure if Mr. Creed is here or not, but if he is, he may answer any questions if you have.
Was there any, any public opposition at all?
None at all.
I've uh, I've known about this business most of my life and uh, it's worked on down there, so uh, everything worked out good and uh, good for the neighborhood, uh, good neighbors. And this morning, I have no opposition at all.
I'm gonna open, let me uh, I'm gonna close our meeting and open a, a pub, public hearing on this zoning uh, case, ZCR one, two, two, one. So at this time, um, public hearing is open. Anybody wishing to speak. I will close the public hearing uh, on this rezoning case and open back up our regular meeting. So, what's the pleasure of the board? First, yes. Looking for a statement of consistency. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it. Alright, looking for a motion to rezone.
Motion to rezone.
Motion by Commissioner Marion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it. Alright, Chris Knopf, our county manager.
U.S. Chairman, first item would be the fiscal year twenty-three budget public hearing. At the last meeting, a recommended budget was presented to the board from myself. Uh, just briefly, the recommended budget, the total budget number is ninety-three million, six hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars. It requires no tax increase. Um, the only requested tax increases uh, during the budget process were from three of the volunteer fire departments. On June the eighth, the board held a budget work session um, here in Dobson. And I'm just going to briefly review uh, the changes as far as the consensus, and then a couple of items that came up since then that I've sent the board, and I think the board's had a chance to review. An eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollar decrease in the EMS budget, a fifty-five thousand, four hundred and nine dollar decrease in emergency management, a two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollar increase in salary reserve, a nine thousand dollar increase in governing body, a one hundred and twenty-five thousand, ninety dollar decrease in elections, a two hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty dollar increase in schools' current expense. That would be one thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars per student. A one hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollar decrease sheriff, a ten thousand and seventeen dollar decrease in the Northwestern Regional Library System. And that was an item that they sent us following the budget work session whereby they're in whereby their insurance costs are going to be lower next fiscal year. So we appreciate them sending that to us. And a $50,000 decrease in Surrey Medical Ministries. This is due to the fact on, I believe it was March the 7th, when the board agreed for that five-year commitment, the board did state that if any funding were made available to Surrey Medical Ministries as part of Invest in Surrey, they would forego the first year in the general fund budget. Overall, that's a change of $9,767 lower than recommended budget. I'll turn it back over to you this time, Mr. Chairman, for the public hearing.
All right, I'll close our regular meeting and open a public hearing on our budget. Anyone wishing to come forward and talk to us about budget matters, I may do so at this time. Seeing no takers, we'll close the public hearing, open back up our regular meeting. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2022-23 Surrey County budget.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman, this is Van Tucker calling in.
A second from Commissioner Tucker, good to hear you tonight. Any discussion? Agreement done, all in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it, all right.
Next item is it would be time for the board to consider appointing a voting delegate and an alternate should the primary delegate be unable to attend to the Association of County Commissioners annual conference in August. And the dates are August 11th through 13th, that's a Thursday through a Saturday. There'll be a number of items voted on leading into the long session for the General Assembly in January. So I would bring that before the board at this time.
Anybody interested in serving as a voting delegate?
I believe it's in Concord.
Yeah. Commissioner Marion said he would go. I took it as you want to go. I'll serve as the alternate.
Okay. Can we get that in the form of a motion?
I'll make a motion that Commissioner Marion and Commissioner Goins would say what they just said they'd do. So I'll vote for that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that in this.
Second by Commissioner Harris, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
All right, also in your packet is a new tenure agreement between the county and Northwestern Regional Library System. This would, the, the current agreement expires on June 30th. This new agreement would take effect, of course, on July 1st and run through June 30th, 2032.
Is that a typical tenure?
Typical tenure would be the maximum the county could agree to go into contract for. And it'll also be something that Allegheny, Yadkin, Stokes would, would also need to approve.
You have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we enter into the agreement with the Northwest Regional Library System per the county commissioners' request.
I have a motion, Mr. Harris, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have it.
Next item is a little of an unusual request. As you all, I'm sure, read in the media about the ongoing deer chronic wasting disease in the region. I believe there's two areas and at least documented in Yadkin County as well as north of us, just across the line in Virginia where this has been discovered. The North Chronicle Wildlife Commission is trying to get out in front of this and they've been holding some meetings in the area with hunters and landowners. And their effort is to get in front of this in the fall, working collaboratively with these groups. What they would like to do here in Surrey and Yadkin Counties is to set up a couple of sites. One would be at the Siloam Recycling Center and the other would be across the river in Yadkin County at the historic Richmond Hill Nature Park. These would basically be locations for them to set up tables, equipment, coolers, a line dumpster, and possibly a very small portable incinerator where they would work with the community to identify any other potential cases this fall. In addition to that, they would like permission to be able to dispose of any carcasses in the Surrey County landfill, potentially from both counties. I've talked with Jessica about this. She feels like at least the Siloam site, which would be the county site, that we probably could accommodate them and work with them in this capacity. But of course, it would require board action.
And I would like to say to our citizens that this is a serious matter. And if you see deer that are acting strange, stranger than usual, I mean, they're about to eat out of your hand and eat everything in your, in your yard. I put netting around all my, all my fruit trees and trying to keep deer off. But if you see deer that are acting not, not normal, meaning they look sick, you need to contact our Wildlife Commission because this is, this is a serious matter. They put a lot of rules in place already. If you're a deer hunter, you probably need to read those. It, it gets into not transporting deer across county line, across the Surrey County line. So if you go to another county and kill a deer, you cannot haul it across the county line unless you follow the procedures that they've set to do that. I mean, you, you have to double bag the meat. You have to have it tested before you process it. So this is a serious matter. And so I'll make a motion that we, that we follow the request of our Wildlife Commission for this chronic wasting disease and using our facilities in Surrey County. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, is, would it, would it be more appropriate to give, for this board to vote, to give the chairman of the Board of Commissioners the latitude to work with the wildlife resources to the extent that may be necessary? Or does a very, would it require a very specific location and, and that sort of thing? And then does the, and does the request for the landfill need to be in the same action or specific or different action, Ed? If, if your resolution gives you wide latitude, I'm all for it and I'll second it.
You want me to amend that just to say, the board chairman?
Do you agree to amend?
I do, I do agree, agree to amend it to that because I do think this is a serious matter. It's a very serious matter. And, you know, it affects, it, it affects something that's important to a lot of us. So I do, I do think it's important. And I would say that they'll probably put coolers at other locations throughout the county. So when you kill a deer, you put the head in the, in the cooler or in the freezer. They did that several, because they had it in Montgomery County in Virginia. And then, of course, they've had a case in Yadkin. We've not had one in Surrey, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it's here. So we just need to be on the lookout for that. But I do amend my motion. So, Mr. Harris, second's that. Any, any discussion, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Van Tucker, this is Van Tucker, I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, I was unable to hear Ed's reply, so I, I might be off base here a little. I agree with all that, that, that you all have said, this is a very serious matter. I'm an, I'm a deer hunter myself. This is a, this is something that could wipe out our deer population indefinitely. And it's also something that could have some human health effects. And it's, it's, so it's very important. And I'm all for taking in the Yadkin County deer. It's just a question in that motion and second and that amendment. I didn't hear Ed's response, I was unable to hear Ed's response. And can we, is it going to be a time limit on how long we'll take Yadkin County deer carcasses? Is that, could that be just timed as long as this crisis goes on? Or that could, could that be implied later that somebody thought we meant indefinitely? Not a big deal, just want a clarification on that.
I'd probably say as long as we're dealing with this, they would use our facilities.
Yeah, to, to, to be as good as long as this crisis is occurring, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And ayes have.
Next item is the HEPTA landfill gas to energy lease renewal. And you did not have this attached in your packet. It was intended to be in there, but there were some last minute issues. I'll let Ed delve into this and of course Jessica's here as well if you have any technical questions.
If y'all recall, back in 2011, the county entered into an agreement to permit PETA to harvest gas, methane gas from the landfill. There was an addendum to that agreement in 2021. And they have come back as part of a comprehensive refinance. They're going to use the lease with Surrey County to collateralize a new loan. The loan will permit them to improve the installation in Surrey County and other installations across the state. I think it's a big deal for them. But back on, I guess, the first, first of May or the first, I guess, the first of June, they sent the addendum, the second addendum for our review. And we requested that they send the rest of the documents. They had promised a memorandum of lease and also four exhibits to the addendum. And we don't have the four exhibits and we still don't have them. And the exhibits are fairly innocuous. One is the legal description. They're, they're going to update the legal description for the footprint that they currently occupy. Exhibit B is a depiction of the land, which is a picture like a GPS. Exhibit C is a definition of the premises. And exhibit D is the existing gas rights agreement that I have in my file, but they haven't been able to come up with, including the addendum. And so, you know, the, the documentation that we don't have i- is, it's important, but what the board could do is go ahead and approve the addendum in principle and hold it until we get all of the pieces that we need to make it complete. Otherwise, it would need to be revisited at a future meeting. And since y'all only meet twice a month, I, I just, I, I don't want to interfere with their financing if we can avoid it, but this is the only option I have. Jessica may be able to speak more to that.
They're applying for a couple of loans through USDA and it's just some of the items that they had to have it to make it legal. They've always been there on that piece of land, piece of property. And they are just trying to work through legalities of it. And for some reason, they keep getting hiccups. And I, my understanding, Ed, was that they needed this approval before the end of June. So that's what's kind of put us in a pickle, that we need to get this moving, but we can't get the information from them.
And I think that the surveyor that they're using is probably the the delay because all of the, all but the fourth exhibit would have been created by through North Survey or whatever. And I think you forwarded me a memo saying that they expected this information mid-July.
I think so. They, they're going to make $500,000 of improvements to the engine that's running there that's burning off the methane. It's, they're constantly replacing things now, so they just need to do basically a whole overhaul of the whole motor. It's not going to pass when they test the emissions. It's burning oil at this point. So they've got to make these upgrades or they're going to shut them down.
We essentially have to have this, don't we?
We do not have to have this. This is a good faith effort that the county started years ago. We are not to the point where we are required to do this. But it does power 600, 800 homes in the area and also prevents leakouts in the landfill. It's very good for the, for the environment as well, but it's not anything that we're required to do at this point.
Since you got to drain the methane off, off, off the landfill at some point or the other.
Eventually, years, we would be years out from having to do that. We're testing really low now. We are at Title V, but we're not, we're nowhere near the required state level.
But this is a net revenue producer for the, the, the landfill.
We are making nothing on it now. We're in the cost sharing phase of this, started two years ago. And where they're putting so much money into trying to rehab and keep this engine alive, we're not making money at this point.
We're not, we're not spending any money, are we?
We are not spending money. It's, it's all on them to do these.
And all they're asking for is an approval. We're not, we're not obligated, we're not going to be any obligated whatsoever to a loan or anything.
No, we're not obligated at all. It would be, basically, they're just wanting, they've always been on that piece of land with that generator and they're just wanting the legality of the lease. There was no lease, I guess, included in the original agreement.
I think what will happen is our lease, which we already had, will serve as collateral or additional collateral for the new loan.
So could we give them the authority to get the paperwork and work out all that? Can we do that?
We, we could go ahead and execute it and just hold it until we have all the pieces necessary to make up the entire agreement and then release it.
Okay.
Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to enter into the lease, enter into the agreement as the county attorney has directed withholding the pieces for a final at a later date.
A motion by Commissioner Harris, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Marion, any further discussion?
This would also include the memorandum.
Mr. Chairman, listen. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I am sorry, I'm hearing chopped up partial, partial statements here. So I could be way off base. It's the thing not making any money and it's just breaking even. And we need to iron out some details of the lease. I'm all for that, but I just want to clarify, by, by furthering the, our obligation to continue the lease, I'm, I want somebody to assure me that's not going to put us in a situation to where, even though we've decided it's not only breaking even, but it possibly couldn't, could be a net loss for the county. Would we, would, would, would anything we're doing here obligate us to continue to lease it to them anyway, regardless of the outcome of a net neutral situation or cost sharing situation that we're in now? Is, is extending this lease prevent us from being able to pull out of this deal at any time, Ed?
No, sir.
Was that answered? No.
And should, should the thing unwind, they're also required to take away their equipment, remove it from our site. We're not saddled with it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add too that this methane recovery product, program that the county entered into probably 10 years ago, I think is some, been something that, that prior boards have been very proud of because this methane is recovered from our landfill and used to run this generator to electrify, as she said, about 500 or 600 homes. And the lease agreement has changed several times during my time on the board. But I still believe this is a worthy project. I don't know if the methane recovery has gone down or what exactly has happened here. But in heretofore, to best of my recollection, and all these numbers are hard to keep up with, we were, we were making money in, at some point in time here, not just a few years ago, on this project. But nevertheless, I want to reiterate my. But nevertheless, I want to reiterate my support for it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes.
Ask the board to amend my agenda to include follow-up on the surplus of the old Westfield School.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Commissioner Harris, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
So the board accepted an initial one hundred and two thousand dollar bid from the Sheltons on June sixth, twenty twenty-two for the property located at six, six, three, one and six, six, oh, seven, Westfield Road. And this property is recorded in book five, forty-nine, page one, zero, six, four, the Surrey County Registry. And this would include that property with two exceptions. One is the existing recycling center, which will be subdivided at the time it is sold. And that description has been in the county's hands for some time now. And a number of historical items that were conveyed to Westfield Baptist Church by the board so that they could remain the community for public use and consumption. Those were the flagpole, the granite World War Two War Memorial, the metal bale and benches. Those are those historical items. Public notice of upset bid was filed on June ninth and the upset bid period ended today at five P M. That's why we're adding this on this evening so that the board doesn't have to wait till July if it doesn't want to, to make a final decision. No upset bids were received during this timeframe. Consequently, it's the board's pleasure whether they accept the initial one hundred and two thousand dollar offer as the final sale price or decline the final offer and reopen for a new starting bid. The estimated tax value of the parcel after subdividing the recycling center, and this is simply an estimate, is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. And the appraised market value from the appraisal that the county completed along with the Jones property last year was two hundred and forty-three thousand.
You calling for discussion? Mr. Chairman, I always try to defer to the commissioner in his district, district, something like this resides and put a lot of weight on that. And that's what I intend to do here, but that does seem a bit under what we would consider fair market value or a rough appraisal. And I'm assuming the tax department did that, is that correct?
Yes.
And as we also have seen from time to time, this board, even though we do advertise property for upset bids and we start the process on whatever property it is we may or may be selling, not a lot of people get, you know, access to this public information like the Mount Airy News, the legal advertisements on the county website. We need to remember that it is a limited number of people who traditionally get those things. Do we have a sign up out there as well?
There's been a sign on the property for better part of a year.
Better part of a year. Okay, and remind me what, what the acreage is there? Little over ten acres? I'm interested to hear what Commissioner Tucker has to say about this, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tucker, do you?
Yes, and I, yes, sir, I'm chiming in. Again, I apologize, I am handicapped somewhat on being able to, at times I can hear you fairly well, but it's choppy and I'm not getting real. I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure what the problem is. I don't think it's anybody's fault there that you're not speaking in the mic. I just simply am getting choppy, choppy understandings. Let me make sure, are we voting on whether or not to accept the bid that the Sheltons has made? Is that, is that the issue at hand?
We're discussing it, we've not made a motion, we're, we're discussing, do we want to accept this bid or not? For a hundred and two thousand dollars. The appraised, the estimated tax value is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. The appraised market value as of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one was two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I've got all that. What I want to know is, I thought we already voted to accept the bid and let the process start. I guess to redefine my question specifically is, where are we in that process? Is this, is this something that is about to be final in the date and time of this first bidding process? And is the question, are we going to accept it if not another higher bid comes in? Is that the question?
We, we can approve or deny and then, and then put it back on the market and go back through the same process.
But the, the process ended today at five o'clock, is that right?
Yep.
It ended today at five o'clock, the ten day upset bid.
I understand, I, I understand. That's, that's, that's what I wanted to know, so that process has ended today. Well, my, I am representing that district as, and since, since I'm asked, that since it's on the east district here. I felt, I said before in my comments when we accepted the bid at the last chance, we discussed this, that I thought we ought to accept the bid and start the process. I also said in those comments, I hope that in the final end game that we would be able to garner a little higher amount of money than that. And I still believe that as the economy looks a little bit tricky right now, that, that is, that is in my estimation and all, all goodwill to the Sheltons and I so much appreciate their bid. I feel like that's a little less than the amount that this property should bring. So I'm going to just chime in and say, I would like, I'm still right where I was the last time. I appreciate the bid, but I think we ought to have a little bit more towards what we think a fair appraisal is, which is quite a bit higher than that amount, somewhere in the middle at least. But I, I would say we, I'm going to suggest that we do not accept that as the final bid and make a sale. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I'm will, I'm willing to, Commissioner Harris and Commissioner Tucker to, I, I feel like possibly later on. But then again, I think, you know, we've already had a for sale sign up for a year and we finally had one offer. So, and none since it's posted, but I, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Harris. It may be the for free, the for sale sign is not quite enough advertisement and, and maybe we can get more. So I'm willing to, to not accept the bid tonight.
Gentlemen, keep in mind that we did have a previous bid on this property that was rescinded. I think that the amount was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and the
I'm sorry.
bidder got cold feet and
You're right.
So then it remained surplus and we received this bid, which renewed the process. So if you reject this hundred and two thousand dollar proposed bid, then it, unless you do something else, it will remain surplus property and subject to additional offers in the future.
I understand. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, to decline to accept the bid as the process, the final bid.
Have a motion by Commissioner Harris, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Ayes have it.
Following General County Business, we have a request for closed session for legal and personnel.
Johnson, I'll start with you.
Thank you. I, I, again, I want to thank the citizens of Surrey County. I think in my packet here that we receive every month of our property tax payments. We are, we're in our eleventh month, we've got eleventh month report. And I, I just really appreciate the, the property owners and all the citizens of Surrey County for bringing in the revenues that makes the, makes everything possible. We are, since I've been on board, I, I've, I'm amazed. I'm amazed that we get ninety-nine plus percent of our property taxes on time and our tax department continues to work with that one percent or less values through, you know, seven or eight, nine years or whatever, getting, trying to collect it all. I, I, I just, I, I'm amazed by it. And I'm also amazed, again, I've said it several times, by all the volunteers we have, especially those that come up tonight with the passion that you have for your organization and what would, what would we be without the volunteers? I know some might be interested in little final details about the, the county budget. So Chris, how can they go on, they just go online and look at each individual pertaining to their particular office or whatever? Or how is that, how will that be available to them, to the, to the, all the citizens?
It'll be available in a few days. They have questions between now and then, they can call the office or email us.
Right. And I guess we, most of us, I think all of us can remember what we did far as the regular budget goes, but we know that we have, we have authorized and our, our finance, our finance committee has a lot of other agencies, nonprofit agencies, and I actually feel like all in all, all of you at least, or at least smile this time for all the efforts that have been put forth. And again, thank you for attending and God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to go back to the bridge dedication naming that we did previous. Ed, it, I think there's some requirement that we maybe have a public forum or an opportunity comment in that process of approval, resolution and the application. And according to Mr. Cox, the, I wanted to make sure we get this right tonight. He states, "A copy of the meeting minutes that state the resolution was passed unanimously and the opportunity for public input was provided." Would the open forum portion of the meeting be sufficient to cover that?
It, it could be, but I would, just abundance of caution, I, I would say that it might be in order to allow additional
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you would, if you could call for a public comment per the attorney's recommendation here on the bridge resolution naming.
All right, we'll allow public comment. Anyone like to come forward and speak on this matter of dedicating this bridge to Trooper Bullard? Would anybody like to come and speak? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, there is a, a two thousand dollar fee associated with the naming of this bridge. And it says, has a source for the two thousand dollar administrative fee for the sign been identified. The requesting party or local government is responsible for two thousand towards the cost of the signs. And I would like to, would it be in order for Chris or for me to request that the county pick up the charts for the two thousand dollars on the sign?
Again, and you could take it from general fund contingency.
Okay. Okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the two thousand dollar fee for the sign be appropriated from general fund contingency.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tucker, would you like to say anything tonight?
I will say a brief word. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was with you from the very beginning by way of telephone here. And I want to apologize to my board members and to the public for not being able to be there in person. I am enduring a physical ailment. I'm a little under the weather and I've been advised by my physician to avoid public appearance tonight, so I stayed home. And, but at any rate, I want, I have listened to the meeting and I appreciate all the public's input on all the issues. I appreciate all the passion that you folks always bring out there in the audience. I want you to know, we, we hear you and we will continue to do as best we can towards fixing some of these situations and addressing some of these other situations and doing the very best we know how to fulfill our duties. And I'd like to say that as well as, again, sorry, I wasn't able to be there and I will look forward to joining you the next time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Commissioner Marion?
Oh, yes, I just, I'd like to say I hope all the fathers had a good day yesterday. Still got to father, you're a lucky, lucky person. So I'd like to thank the finance committee, Chris and Sandy again for the budget. I believe we all was very much in agreement with the budget this year and we're very fortunate, as Larry said, that, you know, we do have good citizens that do pay their taxes. So, and, and the affairs of the county are in really good shape. The general fund balance is good. We, we, with the ARPA money, here before long, we'll be able to help a lot of the nonprofits and, and go forward with a lot of the other stuff that we, that need, that Surrey County needs. But thank you all for being here and, and for your passion and looking forward to another great year.
Thank you, and I'd like to say thank you to the board, to our board. Enjoy working with all of you and this budget process is tedious and, and we've come out unanimous on another budget and I appreciate the work that's been put in by our county staff as well. And we appreciate everybody being here tonight and sharing your comments. And at this time, I'll look for a motion to go into closed session.
Motion. Motion by Commissioner Marion, have a second? Second by Commissioner Johnson, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Making the motions.
Do you want these motions made individually or just all together?
You do them all.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we instruct the Assistant County Manager to approve the Position Classification Plan for 2022-2023 by making changes and adjusting salaries according to the recommendations in the approved budget, providing a 5% cost of living increase for all graded employees and elected officials effective July 1, 2022. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Marion, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Also, make a motion for unbudgeted expenses for Department of Social Services not to exceed $240,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Marion, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.